Welcome to the City of Lemon Grove City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Thank you. City Clerk, will you please call the role of the City Council member to go on the record as an attendant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember LaBaron.
First, I want to say thank you to everybody for being here at tonight's City Council meeting and my friend, Councilmember LaBaron.
Councilmember Snow.
Councilmember Snow here. I've lost my voice, but I'm doing my best. And now I'm going to take a map guide so that we all can see this.
Councilmember Gasteel absent. Mayor Cotan Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
We have a corner with the council.
Thank you so very much. So I'll ask Councilmember LaBaron to lead us in the place.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the agenda tonight, if you were here at the last City Council meeting, I announced that Councilmember Gasteel had a heart attack. He had surgery, had heart surgery, and the surgery went well. And he's been recovering according to the anticipated schedule. He shared with me that he's been walking briskly in the hallways of the hospital, and he's expecting to come home soon. So I will ask those who pray to please keep him in your prayers. And he is in the process of recovery. I'd like to know if we have any changes to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask that we collect a couple items from the consent calendar, one being item 1B, so that we can discuss how the city's been spending the money over the last month. That's our City of Lemon Grove payment demands. And then item 1C, so that we can discuss the lease agreement with Drive Lemon Grove for Farmers Market for Jemza Heritage Park. I think that the community would find benefits to finding out how it is that organizations can come into this kind of a partnership with the city.
Thank you so very much. Do we have a second?
I would support the discussion on 1C.
So we do have a second for item number 1C. And so for item 1B, Gasteel, and so we'll put item number 1C at the end of the agenda. Moving on to our presentation portion of the meeting, we have a presentation tonight regarding property tax release, relief or flood relief. This presentation will be provided by Jordan Zimmars, who is our county assessor, recorder and county clerk. And so I'll turn it over to Jordan Marks to provide his presentation.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council.
Please hold the mic. Please hold the mic so that we can capture your voice and everyone can hear you in the room. Speak directly into the mic.
Yes, yes. Is that better?
Yes, you have to continuously speak into the mic. Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right, we'll work with that. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jordan Marks, I'm your San Diego County Assessor, Reporter, County Clerk. Honored to be here to help assist the citizens of Lemon Grove. With me is my chief deputy assessor, Sergeant Olson, resident here of East County. You're here to present on San Diego County Tax Relief. While he is not here with me this evening, we do have a tax expert advocate office. These slides will be available to the city, the chair afterwards. So that way, any member that needs assistance, you have a specific member of my staff. Out of the 58 counties in the state of California, we're the only one with a formal tax expert advocate office to make sure that we are here to help you and guide you because you don't wake up every day as a proper tax expert. But you want to know that our office is here to make sure that you are receiving the maximum savings possible. Unfortunately, on January 21st to 23rd, we saw a winter storm, 2024, hit Southern California, San Diego County, which led to Governor Gavin Newsom declaring a calamity, Governor proclaimed disaster here in San Diego County. This opened up the opportunity for my office to provide property tax relief for flood survivors. Lemon Grove, East County, this area happened to be one of the hardest hit areas. Property tax relief is available for those that file within one year of the Governor-proclaimed disaster proclamation, that is January 21st to 23rd, for those property owners that have over $10,000 of damage or greater. The property owners do not need to know the exact damage that they've actually incurred. If you believe you have over $10,000 in damage and are still getting estimates, please file with our office. We're going to work with you. You're going to submit the estimates afterwards. A lot of people think, well, I might have $8,000 in damage, and then the estimates come in and they're greater. It is better to file and preserve your rights for the relief and then work with us so we can deliver that relief for you. The tax relief is available for homeowners, business owners. If you own a boat, plane, or if you're a small business owner or business owner that has business equipment that has been impacted, we can provide you property tax relief, which will lead to a reduction in your property taxes until you have rebuilt and replenished that asset and made whole. A lot of folks are concerned, is this going to increase my property taxes? Am I getting rid of my Proposition 13 protection? No. This is a temporary reduction while you rebuild. But when you rebuild to what you originally had pre-disaster, this will restore the same taxes to the way they were before. Your property taxes will not increase. This is a percentage relief. In addition, my office has worked diligently after touring through the area here in East County. We saw there was a need, especially toured with Reverend Shane Harris, the People's Association of Justice Advocates. We saw a need for deferment and property tax relief. We were able to do that. That's a photo of Reverend Shane and I at the Board of Supervisors with the leadership of Chair Nora Vargas and Supervisor Montgomery Step. We were able to pass additional relief for those that were impacted that have over $10,000 of damage or greater, homeowners or business owners with 20% of their property value lost. We can defer your property tax bill for this upcoming April 10th payment. But you must file with my office by April 10th at 5:00 PM, a request to defer that property tax bill. What is important is, in this disaster of floods, the most insurance, even if you have the insurance coverage that most of us homeowners have, the floods were not covered in that homeowner's insurance. Most of us did not have the coverage for that. So having the cash on hand to be able to make that relief payment, make that additional coverage, help expedite the rebuilding of your home, make sure that we're getting rid of the hazard from your home, so you and your family can get back there as quick as possible, is important. So you will not have to pay the property tax until your home is actually rebuilt. And then after you rebuild, you'll then have 30 days to make the payment on that bill. It is a very positive program. It is good for our homeowners, but you must file and request that relief with my office again. For homeowners, you have over $10,000 in damage. Business owners, 20% of your property value has been impacted or greater. We can defer your upcoming April 10th property tax bill. You must file with our office and have filed for that property tax reduction by April 10th at 5:00 PM. And again, it's not until you fully rebuild that you have to actually make that property tax payment. A lot of folks are worried, well, when do I have to pay it? Or how long is it going to take to process my permits? Once you're final, once we get that final permit that says you're back, you're made whole, then you can make that property tax payment. In addition, this is a very easy process. My office has put this application online. It is at sdarcc.gov. It is a one-page electronic application. We understand that many folks have lost their homes. They don't have a home address to mail it to. Go online, fill it out on our website, e-signature. Easy, accessible. We are considerate to those that are victims, so we can help you move to becoming survivors of the winter storm. Lastly, in addition to being the assessor and helping folks with property taxes, I'm also the reporter, county clerk. We help folks with vital records. Those are birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates. Many folks are applying for FEMA relief, and I know FEMA has been here at the city helping folks on the ground. Many people have lost those vital records. You can get those for free from my office. Come to any office. We have two offices that are equally located close to here, Santee, or our downtown office, free parking. Come in, let us know that you are a flood victim. We will reprint those vital records for you. If you were born in San Diego County, married in San Diego, or lost a loved one in San Diego County, we can reprint those records for you for free. If you're born, if you're born, married, or have passed away in another county here in the state of California, our office actually will mail that request to the other county for you. We're going to take that extra step to deliver you great customer service and make sure that all of our San Diego County residents are taken care of. So there are multiple ways that we can deliver your relief. I want to make sure we put that at your fingertips. It's important that we, as a community, come together and are doing everything possible to move folks from being victims to survivors and rebuilding together. Again, here are four convenient office locations, free parking at all of them. Our staff are there, ready to serve you, and you should be able to get in and out of my office in less than 10 minutes with your records in hand. We deliver great customer service. I know some people think I'm going to a government office and having to take an hour of lunch. Don't worry. You can still hit the drive-through, go to your favorite restaurant, get back to work. We're going to take care of you. Lastly, during the rebuilding process, a lot of folks are going to see liens potentially put on their property. A lot of mischievous things happen with their property. There's a way to protect your property and keep an eye out to make sure nobody takes your property. Nobody puts an illegal lien on your property. We have a free service. My office is the first in the state of California to deliver electronic notification to protect you from title fraud. It's called Owner Alert. Again, free at sdarcc.gov. It takes five minutes to sign up. It's free to all homeowners, so I hope every homeowner and property owner in Lemon Grove takes advantage of this. As you're paying your bill on April 10th, you just pull your parcel number, APN, off your property tax bill, punch it in with your name, and we're going to let you know if anybody tries to take your property. We have a direct link to the DA's office. We are working to protect the citizens of San Diego County. It is your biggest investment. We are going to do everything possible to let you know we are keeping you and your property safe. And especially as contractors are working on property, we're going to let you know if somebody tries to do something to your property to encumber your biggest investment. We're going to protect you. This is a way that we do it. It's called Owner Alert. It should take everybody less than five minutes to sign up. It is a free service from my office. Again, first in the state of California to deliver a way to protect you and your home. If there's anything else that my team and I can do to help you, please let us know. There's our phone number, 619-236-3771, or email us, arcchelp@sdcounty.ca.gov. We have a rule. Answer phones in less than five minutes, you're going to get a person on the phone. This isn't an 800 number where you're going to sit there for two hours, okay? We want the people to know that they can call us. We are tax experts. We are document experts. We are the folks that are there to serve you and help you rebuild. And thank you for the opportunity to present and be a partner in helping Lemon Grove come out of this winter storm and be more resilient.
I want to take this opportunity to thank our assessor for coming to Lemon Grove to share this important resource with us as we know that there are many people who have been impacted by the winter storms in such a way that help is needed in every single area. Before we move on to the next presentation tonight, I just want to check with our elected officials to see if you have a question for Jordan Marks before he leaves. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Snow.
First of all, I wanted to just thank you. I was there, like you guys were up and have remote office locations right in the middle of it at the Resource Center, and people were able to go to you there. So thank you so much for being a great community partner. This is literally cash back in our constituents' hands and paying their taxes faithfully. And this recognizes like a way that we can actually get money back into their pockets, perhaps through another resource. So we're really grateful for that. One of the problems that we're having in our community are issues with storm-prone farm drain locations. And I know we were able to refer people over to you while we were at the Resource Center, and they were able to pull documents and discuss easements and stuff. So can you talk a little bit about that process? What information might be on the records related to people's farm drains?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Part of the work that my office does is the mapping for the county. So currently, we are working with the Office of Emergency Services and putting together a heat map of where we are seeing the damage done to the properties across the county. And so we have our GIS systems, and we will be releasing that information and putting it out there. So that way, not, we're doing it so that way we can identify and make sure we're not missing a single person from receiving the relief that they deserve. But also, folks can do that to see where the damage occurred and in the areas. In addition, if you have a property that was reported with easements or other rights of access from infrastructure, whether Caltrans, school districts, municipalities, counties, that information and records are held by our office. We just recently opened up a county archive specifically for protecting property records and making sure that you can, you can know that the future ownership entitled to how your property is held and how you can claim ownership of your property is protected for a lifetime. We're putting it to the future. We have all that there in my office. We can help you research your records. We can help you research ownership records and property lines and different information. So if there are questions that you do have, in addition to the property tax relief that we just brought forward, my office is currently working on another board letter to bring forward to the Board of Supervisors to make the property records free for flood victims. So that way, nobody will have to pay to access their records right now because they need that as they enter the rebuilding process, access permits and other items. So you will see additional relief coming forward, and that will match. But the immediate relief that we wanted to deliver right now was property tax deferment, property tax relief.
Thank you so very much. And I'm just checking to see if anyone else has any questions. In this moment, I just want to say that we know the value of the resources that are available to those who have been impacted by the storm. And I'm pleased to see that you actually came to our community to speak about some of the resources that are available. And I want to make sure that everyone here knows that while Jordan will leave this council, there is information that you can access so that you can submit your claims. Where can they go in order to do so? How can they get the information once they leave the City Council meeting?
The best thing to do is on our website, sdarcc.gov. It's electronic. It's online, e-signature. We wanted to do it because the April 10th property tax deadline is looming, and we wanted to make sure folks sleep at night, not worry about losing their home to a property tax payment. And they can concentrate on using those fellow resources to create a safe environment. Now, when I walked the different areas that were damaged, the homes, you could feel the water, you could see the damage on the walls, you could smell the toxicity in the air. People need to remediate, need to invest in making sure they have a safe place to sleep at night. They want to return to their homes. In the meantime, we're also making sure that they have the resources, the places to stay, and the additional state and federal resources, so that way they have the time and the safe places to sleep, and the hotels and rooms that the county is providing. But they want to be back at home, right? And so having that cash on hand is key, making sure that they can get as homeless as possible and start the rebuilding process.
Thank you so very much. And I just want to let everyone know that while there's 18 cities located throughout the county of San Diego, I just know that this particular government agency is a general loss city. And what that means is when an emergency happens, like a winter storm that impacts the county, including Lemon Grove, or a situation that impacts our health and wellbeing such as COVID, the county of San Diego takes the lead on behalf of the City of Lemon Grove. So knowing that this resource came to us here, I just want to say thank you. But also, if you go to the county website, there may be additional resources that you can tap into if you have been impacted by the storm. So again, thank you, assessor, for attending our meeting tonight and sharing this information with us. And just know that at any time, if there are any updates that you would like to provide, any programs that will benefit community members, homeowners, you're always welcome back to provide an update.
Thank you very much. And again, if anybody has any questions or if you're just unsure, our staff are on hand to help you. Santee or downtown, free parking, easy to get in. We're going to be there. And just when in doubt, fill it out, please. Let us follow up with you. We want to help you access the relief and make sure that you're doing everything possible so you can focus on what's most important, rebuilding.
Thank you so very much. I do see Councilmember LaBaron. I believe she has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Jordan, you and your team, for having this commitment to serve the community well. The government does not need to operate inefficiently, and government does not need to take a million years to do things of action. So I commend you and your team's strong desire to meet the needs of the community fast, efficiently, professionally. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And we do have another presentation tonight, and it's the Lemon Grove Fire Department Annual Update. And so I'll introduce Fire Chief Brett Ku, who will present the Lemon Grove Fire Department Annual Update.
Good evening, Mayor Vasquez, members of the City Council. I also want to introduce our 50 chief of operations, Todd Nelson, who's going to be presenting with me. All right. So Heartland Fire Rescue is a joint powers agreement between the cities of El Cajon, La Mesa, and Lemon Grove. And our mission, our mission statement is to provide safe communities through exceptional professional service. So for 2023, there's two specific goals that we identified. First and foremost was to create resilience in our organization and the communities that we serve. And second is to provide the best service with the available resources that we have. This org chart kind of shows how our organization is set up. I apologize if the colors are a little bit washed out, but the seven colored positions, those are all JPA positions. And the two yellow boxes, those are Lemon Grove positions that are specific to City of Lemon Grove Fire Department. So tonight's report, topics that we're going to cover are going to be emergency response call volume for 2023, responses that we respond to by call type, turnout times, our prevention activity, major incident types, fight training hours, automatic give-in and receive by Lemon Grove Fire Department, CPR, return of spontaneous circulation RASK, and department programs. And all of these, these topic areas aren't just a part of our mission and the goals that we can identify. So more specifically now about Lemon Grove Fire Station 10 stamping. So for 2023, we were fully staffed, which meant that we had one full-time fire inspector, had six fire captains, two on duty daily, six fire engineers, two on duty daily, and six firefighter paramedics, two on duty daily. And we have a fleet of three fire engines, two frontline and one reserve grid. And as the slide depicts here, our frontline engine 10 is from 2014, has 84,000 miles on it. And it's been a good workforce. And probably in a little while here, we're going to have, looking at putting that grid into reserve status. But as of right now, it's a strong fire engine that that's running as well. Second engine that just went into service, and really wanted to say thank you to the City Council for your support. His engine 210 went into service in 2023. Took a while, COVID challenges that we had to overcome. But that grid is now in service and serving the community and making sure we're able to respond to emergencies as needed. And then the last engine that we have is engine 310, and that's currently in reserve status. It's a 2004 engine and it has 160,000 miles, so it is a little bit unreliable at this point. So this shows how the cost of services, volume or trends for last five years. In 2023, we actually had a little bit of a dip for cost per services. And it was about 113 home decrease compared to 2022. That trend actually happens to be taking place throughout Southern California. We just talked about it at our recent Board of Chiefs meeting, so it's not unique to Lemon Grove. And right now, we don't really have a really good reason to say why that's happening, but we're anticipating... we're anticipating cost per services going up to next year. And I'm going to turn over the operational side of different call types and major incidents to Chief Nelson.
Good evening. For the next couple of slides, we're going to take a little bit closer look at some of those calls that we just talked about. The slide shows the major incident types that the firefighters of Lemon Grove responded to in 2023. The top line there is something that we'll take a second to focus on, and that is fire calls. It does represent a smaller percentage than some of the other call types that we have, specifically the medical calls, which make up about eighty-two percent of our responses. But one of the things that we have instilled in our firefighters since day one is the nature of those fire calls and their ability to potentially harm life and property. And that's one of the things that we really treat as one of our definite priorities. All of the calls are important, but fire calls are definitely something that can impact the community extremely quickly. Next slide, please. This slide just shows in a little bit different manner that the overwhelming majority of our calls are for medical aids for people within the community of Lemon Grove. We have quite a few miscellaneous calls beyond that that we respond to. And then again, that smallest slice of the pie is those fire calls, but have the potential to damage life and property in a way like the other calls may not. Next slide, please. This slide, the map is a little bit hard to see, but I want to assure you that that white space in the middle, that represents the city of Lemon Grove on a map. All of the calls outside of that white space are automatic aid calls that the Lemon Grove Fire Engines provide to other agencies around us. And some may ask, like, why isn't Lemon Grove Fire Department focusing on Lemon Grove? Well, I would assure you that they are. And so as we get to the next slide, please. This shows you all the different agencies that have come into the city of Lemon Grove to aid us with automatic aid. When we have a structured fire in the city of Lemon Grove, we get four engine companies, one truck company, and that's the big truck with the ladder on top, and two battalion chiefs. And for Lemon Grove to field those effective firefighting forces on those first alarm calls, we need that help from outside agencies. And by providing reciprocal automatic aid to those other agencies that surround us, we're able to get that and maintain those agreements. Next slide, please. This slide covers one of the things that I think we're most proud of, of your Lemon Grove firefighters. And this is our unit turnout times from 2023. One of the hard things to see on this graph is that the side graph there is in seconds. And currently, we just received the latest report for the last quarter, and I'm very pleased to announce that those turnout times that you see have come down to meet that green line. And the firefighters in Lemon Grove, out of all eight stations that we supervise, have the fastest turnout time. What that means to us is when the alarm goes off in the fire station and the lights go off overhead indicating that there's a call, so firefighters in Lemon Grove are very quick to get on the rig and respond to the call, to provide aid to the citizen. So that truly is one of the things that we are most proud of.
The next I want to talk about fire prevention activities. So the saying is, counsel prevention is worth kind of suppression or also kind of hunky-chick life saved by prevention or countless. But there's a lot of truth to that. We wouldn't be able to save all the lives and make a big difference in everybody's taking well-being without having prevention activities. It's a lot easier to prevent unsafe conditions at a time. So our prevention bureau has been busy. Last year, they conducted a hundred and eighty-six interviews of when buildings were being built. They conducted three hundred and forty-seven inspections. They did seventy-five new construction inspections, and they completed fifty-five engine company inspections. Beyond that, they did some public education and outreach at both banquet breakfast and when we were forming or rolled in the new engine company. Next, please. Next item I want to talk about is training hours. So for us to be effective in what we're doing, we need to make sure we stay up on our skills training. And Lemon Grove firefighters did an excellent job of meeting our training hour goal of twenty hours per month. There's a few things that contribute to that. We had two new hires last year, so there's a lot of training that takes place for initial training and ongoing training. We also have succession training that was taking place. Our folks were preparing for promotional tests. And last but not least, paramedic skills maintenance training. Next slide, please. This slide talks about returns to continuous circulation. So we're talking about why it is important for us to do all this training and make a difference in people's lives. This data is from 2022 because that's when it gets released. That's when we have final outcomes of how things, what happened or worked out. But in 2022, there was thirty CPRs that our personnel responded to. And out of those thirty CPRs, we had seven successful CPR saves, which is actually twenty-three point three percent. That's a great, great number to have and really speaks volumes to the training and efforts of our firefighters. And I do want to talk about a little bit about that photo that's next to the stats there. This is a call that took place in Lemon Grove. There was a medical emergency on the roof. And so all the training that we use, not just the paramedic training, but the rescue training, went into play at this call here. This ended up being a successful outcome, but getting somebody who's in cardiac arrest and CPR done to them, trying to get them off the roof, into the ambulance, into the ER, takes a lot of effort and coordination. And this was a successful outcome, as I mentioned, really speaks volumes to the power of this. Next slide. So some other programs that we have at our department. Obviously, training is a huge component, as you saw in training hours. We also have a peer support program, especially nowadays. We're seeing a lot of stressors and anxiety and mental health issues affecting our personnel as well as everybody else in the community. And one of the best ways for us to help out our folks is by having a peer support program. Beyond that, we do have a wellness program. We provide annual physicals to make sure our personnel are staying fit, fit for duty physically. We also have a grants program, and I just wanted to share with you, our grants program last year secured sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars for Lemon Grove Fire Department. And specifically, I think that the biggest win that we had was a grant from Gary Sinise Foundation, where we got twenty-six thousand dollars for personal protective equipment. And next, we have a reserve firefighter program for people who are maybe contemplating a career in fire service. It's a volunteer program. We will train you to firefighter level, and you have an opportunity to be part of our team and respond to calls. And there is some time commitment that goes with it, and there's certain aspects that you have to meet to become a reserve firefighter, but it's a great program. It's a great way for folks, especially young folks who are interested in fire service, to get a taste of it. And the next program I want to talk about is the Fire Explorer Program. So this is more so for high school kids who are thinking, this might be something interesting for them to do. This is opening it up for the, you see what Fire Department is, and it is somewhat a low barrier, making sure that anybody in the community has access to this program and access to fire department careers. And the next program is our Urban Search and Rescue Program. We do have a member from Lemon Grove Fire Department who's part, this is a FEMA Urban Search and Rescue team that's stationed out of San Diego. And he is putting in extra time and effort and training to volunteer his time and be part of this team. And so when there are nationwide emergency disasters, his team gets activated. The value that it brings to us, to Lemon Grove Fire Department is his skill set, his experience. When stuff like that happens here, he is able to provide these skill sets and experience just to our community. Last but not least, it's Community Emergency Response Team Program. This is a volunteer program for folks who are interested in helping out in non-emergency ways, but when there's emergencies, a big place, helping out, our department's a core role. And it has been successful as well. Our search members have helped out with different training situations, special events, and they're very active. Next slide. And that's the end of that presentation.
Thank you so very much for providing our annual update here in our City Council meeting. This information is very valuable and really happy and proud to see that we were able to replace one of the oldest fire trucks here in the city of Lemon Grove, which was long overdue. And I look forward to seeing and continuing to see the response times improve because we know that just a few seconds, and especially when it comes to life or death situations, just a few seconds can make a difference between life and death. Well, I'll check with our council members to see if they have any questions for you. Council members, no?
Thank you so much again for everything that you do. I'm super excited that we're the fastest. Thank you. And I just wanted to check on some of the things that we were going, the city was going to do for the Fire Department. One of the things, can you tell us, give us an update on the status of the doors that we are going to work on?
Well, it's a, obviously a team effort. We've been working with our police works, counterparts. Our department is just one member of a bigger team, and they're coming. I don't have exact date yet when they're going to be installed, but they're on their way. They're being paid as we speak.
Okay, fantastic. Do you want me to link it?
Test. So the roll-up doors are on order. We have to, for the Fire Department, select a color. They're being powder coated, and the order has been placed. But they're waiting to be arrived.
And that's another easy question, too, but the drains at the back of the station, I mean, I know that they needed some work. How, what's happening?
So we are awaiting our third vote to address both the trade inch and sewer trade issues, and we're awaiting the third and final vote before work can proceed.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you, city staff, for really helping us, for saving lives.
Thank you for your support.
And I'll check to see if any other council members have any questions. As I do not see Mayor Phil Tem Mendoza.
Just a little personal point. Um, you mentioned the cert. I had taken CPR before, it was a while ago, but at the fire station, we had the cert table set up, the volunteers were there, and they did a CPR demonstration for me again. And one thing they told me was that really the chest compressions were more important than, were the most important thing that you should be doing. And that was just like last summer. And then my husband, as you know, my husband had a massive heart attack in September, and my son, my son was home, I was not. I found my husband when I got home. But it's very difficult to do CPR, especially for women to do it on a man, grown men. But I was able to instruct my son, and I was on the phone with the dispatch, and they were walking me through it. I, there was, the, our firefighters got there before the paramedics, and they were so professional and just did such an amazing job. They, they got there so quickly. Of course, we live close to the, you know, only a couple of minutes away, but the only reason my husband didn't survive is because he was probably alone for too long. But I just want to publicly thank Heartland Fire, Lemon Grove Fire Fighters, for just their heroic efforts. They really do, you guys really do get there very quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, and thank you, Izzy, for providing the update regarding the true needs of the Fire Department to ensure that not only they maintain the response time, but hopefully improve. What I'm looking forward to is when we enter into our goal-setting, priority-setting workshop, because we want to make sure that we are prioritizing public safety for residents here in our community. And the best way to do that is to hear from you in terms of the needs so that we can maintain and improve that response time. So I thank you so much for the presentation tonight, and we will move on to our next presentation, which is from the Sheriff's Department, who will provide their annual report. So I will turn this over to Lieutenant Billson Berry to present the Sheriff's Department Annual Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, staff. Thank you for having me here tonight so that I can present the year review for the Lemon Grove Sheriff's Association. So snapshot of the station, thirty-two forty main street. We served the entire city of Lemon Grove. Population as of yesterday through the Department of Finance, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty. Currently operating out of the Rancho San Diego Sheriff's Station. Due to the winter storm, we were displaced, but we were operating in the Rancho San Diego Sheriff's Station, and we're still responding to the city. So snapshot of our staffing, one lieutenant, myself, patrol sergeants, traffic sergeant, twelve patrol deputies. One of those deputies is a pert clinician. They partner up with a deputy where they respond to medical emergencies or mental health services type requests. So we have that specialized deputy with a pert clinician. We've got three traffic deputies, a motor deputy, two detectives. And then we have our professional staff. Along with the professional staff, we have a community services officer. That person is kind of a quasi-sworn deputy. They respond to calls for service, and they take reports for the city. We have a crime analyst and a crime profession specialist. So highlighting my crime profession specialist, she's with the city now for a handful of years. Her name is Shannon Clevenger, and she is a standalone, just a rock to the station. She provides excellent services. You'll see her at all the community meetings, obviously, in every watch. She provides a lot of the resources to the community that otherwise law enforcement wouldn't be talking to you about. I'm going to talk a couple of these services because I'm pretty proud of them. One of them is fairly new, the Blue Envelope Program. So that is a program that we, as the Sheriff's Department, have begun this year where it's a service where members of the community that may have a disability, this is a way for us to identify them if we're in a police contact with them, such as a traffic stop. If this person has an item that we provide them, which could be something as simple as a blue strap that goes on their seatbelt, or an item on their license plate, which lets us know that this might be a member of the community that has a disability, and we want that. And we want that, we want that notification so that, so that we can act accordingly. Not that we would act any worse, but we want to make sure that we take them into consideration. The Yana Program, You're Not Alone, that is a program that we have for our seniors of the community. A lot of people don't know about that program, so if your friends and loved ones have a senior that's living at home and they may live out of the city or even out of the state, we can get them into the program and we have our senior volunteers do checks on them periodically to make sure they're doing okay. We bring them Christmas dinner, we bring them Thanksgiving dinners. We just try to give them the dignity that they deserve and let them know that we still care about them. Slide. Additional investigative resources that comes out of the county's sheriff's department that comes to the city. We have homicide unit, child abuse, family protection units, financial crimes unit, juvenile services. All these other units over here on the upside, narcotics and gang division. All those units are specialized units that help us in the city when we're trying to mitigate problems such as narcotics trafficking, gang activity. So they come in and they give us additional resources and they're, they're a very valuable benefit to us. Slide. More resources, of course, we have our Austria. We have an unmanned aerial support unit which provides drones for us. Sometimes we'll not be able to get Austria out here because of weather or the time of day. We can still deploy a drone over a crime scene, get situational awareness with our drones. We have our SWAT team, search and rescue, senior volunteer patrol on the bottom. And then emergency plan detail, that's something you don't hear about. It's unique to the sheriff's department. And really what that is, is that highlights a secondary role that the sheriff has at the county, which is mutual aid. So we provide mutual aid for the entire county in times of need for the, for the other cities. And the emergency plan detail heads that mutual aid up for the county. Slide. So twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. The numbers say right there that there's been a decrease in crime up until this point. We've seen decreases in robberies, burglaries, vehicle thefts, and martsknees. And that's significant because those, much like most crimes, they hit pretty hard when you're a victim. These crimes, when we say decrease in these crimes, it just, it, it makes us feel better, lets the community members know it's, it's a lot safer to be out there on the streets. You're not going to have to worry about something like this. I'm from New Jersey and I live right outside New York City and that stuff happens all the time. So I feel much safer walking around here in Lemon Grove than back in New York. Slide. So snapshot of our calls for service. Eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-one for the year twenty twenty-three. In addition to that, deputies made six thousand two hundred and sixty-one deputy-initiated contacts. That's deputies just going up to the members of the public, saying hello. It could be seeing if someone looks like they're in distress, distress. If we're contacting someone that may be up to suspicious activity. Calls for service decreased. That was good. That means we have less things going on where the community members are not having to worry about giving us a call. On average, deputies responded to thirty-one calls for service and conducted seventeen initiated actions per day. That's quite a bit because at any given time in the city, that two deputies are on duty along with the traffic deputies. So those two deputies that are working in response to their calls for service, in between that, they're contacting. Slide. So total arrests, nine hundred and one twenty twenty-three. Majority of those were adult offenders. Majority of those offenses were misdemeanors. Deputies from Lemon Grove Sheriff's Station averaged approximately two point five arrests per day. That's eight arrests per month. That is our traffic unit, consists of six positions. We have a traffic sergeant, three traffic deputies, and a motor deputy, which was in addition from last year. That motor deputy has been significantly helping out with our traffic division in the city. I've had more accolades for that motor deputy than I have had complaints from the public. And that's very unique. That just goes to show that our deputy that's out there on that motor, John Baylofs, is just, he's just going out there and he's keeping people in check when it comes to traffic. He's highlighting the schools, he's making sure that he's seen, and he's making sure that those offenders are getting talked to at the very least. Trying to keep the schools safe on the streets. And then he's also going out to our hotspots along with our traffic deputies where we see some collisions in the cities. We had four fatalities in twenty twenty-three. Those collisions were investigated by our, we have a team of deputies that are traffic reconstruction, accident reconstruction people. They come out and they go to these fatalities. So those were investigated by those reconstructionists. Slide. Kind of a big looking slide right there, but those are the hotspots. And so that would be Massachusetts and Broadway, and then Lemon Grove Avenue and Broadway. That's kind of where we have our hotspots for traffic accidents. Deputies continue to do proactivity over there, not just our traffic deputies, but also patrol deputies. The more we're in those areas, the more people are less likely to be speeding through or not paying attention to what they're doing, following the signs when they're not supposed to be turning on red, things of that nature. Slide. These are our challenges. Highlight, top one there is homelessness. We're doing the best we can to stay empathetic to that problem. We're trying to be resourceful. We have a sheriff's homeless team that is mainly, they are dedicated to the county, but they do provide us some assistance and resources. So we're doing what we can to help mitigate that problem. It's a challenge, but we're not backing away from it. We're trying to do the best we can to help it. Proliferation of illegal drugs, that continues to be a problem. We have our ideas where that happens and where that occurs. And like I highlighted earlier with specialized units, we bring people in to help us with that, specialized narcotics teams. Public perception. It's been a challenge for the past ten years trying to convince the public that we're just trying to do the very best we can. Most of us enjoy the job we do. Most of us are actually in it to just do the best we can for the public. Our challenge is our recruitment and retention. We're doing the best we can to do that. Everyone in this audience, you're welcome to put in applications. You're welcome to tell your friends and family. We're always looking for great people. I'm sure you've got great people in your families. Bring them on down. We're looking to recruit. Slide. These are our initiatives, continuing to address mental health. Like I said earlier, we have a PERC clinician that goes with a deputy. They're constantly out there helping the members of the community that are having these crises. We've partnered, we've partnered with MTS to continue to keep the platform for the Massachusetts and the Lemon Grove Avenue Trolley Station as safe as it can. And again, increase recruiting efforts from within the community. Slide. Substance abuse and overdose prevention. We have harm reduction kits. Narcan that we provide to the public at the sheriff's station. That's a firearm entry report that shows how many guns we seized in twenty twenty-three. So there was eighty-two firearms seized, twenty-three were used in crime. Two of them were stolen, thirteen were surrendered by the public. Twenty twenty-four, we've had ten to date seized, one was a crime gun. I'd like to say something about the thirteen that were surrendered to the public. If there's anyone in here that wants to surrender any, this Saturday, we're having a gun safety program at the First Baptist Church in Lemon Grove, Main Street Two. We're giving away hundred dollar gift cards. So if you know anyone that has like an old shotgun or rifle sitting in the closet, haven't used it in thirty years, we're going to give you a two, a hundred dollar gift card for those guns. No questions asked. Come on down. We're giving away gift cards for guns. Next slide. That's all I have.
Thank you so very much for providing the update. I will check with our council members to see if they have any questions. Mayor Phil Temmendoza?
You did, you did meet some future applicants at San Miguel Elementary School, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I sure did.
In kindergarten class.
I did the best I could to recruit them, yes.
Said they wanted to put up here. My grant side wants to be, I asked them. We'll work, we'll work on it. I, I'm, I'm very impressed by the traffic, by patients increase eighty-five percent. That is amazing. One of the biggest complaints we hear in Lemon Grove is people just driving like it is, who are, and, you know, driving too fast. So, um, yes, that traffic deputy really did much help. And last year's capital, we were probably going to come up. And when you say there's two deputies at any given time, sometimes there are more at other times, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So we, we have overlap. But generally, there's two deputies per shift and there's overlap. And that includes addition of the traffic deputies.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
And I'll check again with our elected officials to see if there are any questions or comments. So thank you Lieutenant Berry for providing this annual update. We appreciate you and all that you do. But also all of the sheriffs who were diligently to cover Lemon Grove and all of the efforts in place to make sure that our community is safe. We will now, if you'd like to provide any final comments?
I, I'd like to add one thing to that, ma'am. So we, when we had to leave the station and go out to the Rancho San Diego Sheriff's Station, that was a contingency plan for our department. And I wanted to highlight that within one day of us being out there, the deputies collectively, the deputies, not the sergeant, not myself, decided that they didn't feel like they were close enough to the city. So they decided that they were going to make themselves a lot closer by operating out of the storefront down at Spring Valley. They did something wrong. And I, I just wanted to highlight that because that just shows the resilience, the dedication, and the pride they have in serving the community. And we want to make sure that their response time is a lot closer than having to come from all the way to Rancho San Diego. So I just wanted to highlight that. I'm very proud of them for that.
Uh, thank you so very much. And while we are on the subject of, you know, response times and being close at home, you know, we know that the sheriff's station was impacted by the winter storm as well. Really pleased with the response that was in place to try and mitigate what occurred and to try and make sure that we could get to a place where our sheriffs could be local again. I want to take, I want to thank staff for stepping out to try and make that happen. But also the sheriffs for adjusting and doing what they can and coming up with innovative ways to ensure that Lemon Grove is covered. So please, for those comments, my comments to those who cover the city of Lemon Grove, we appreciate you and all that you do. Thank you. We will now move to our general public comment portion of the meeting. And during the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please note that according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker or the topic may be brought back to the city council for consideration at a future date. Per Lemon Grove Municipal Code, Chapter two point one four point one five zero, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium to begin speaking. I do have the speaker slips here. We will start with Nada Morrison, followed by John L. Wood. Uh, please make, please make sure that you speak directly into the mic.
Okay. And I wanted to talk about Anchorage One Second, uh, the day of the storm. Our house and our backyard flooded.
Directly into the mic.
Our house and our backyard flooded. Uh, and while we are not as bad as many others in the city, county, state, uh, our damage mattered to us. The water was about ankle-high deep downstairs. We have a two-story house. Uh, the main part of the house is at street level. The water was about ankle-high deep downstairs and flowing at mid-shin level outside our yard. For reference, I'm class of seven and mid-shin is here. Our backyard fence was completely knocked down and about one quarter of that fence was ripped out and ended up in the yard of the neighbor behind us. They were about six feet lower than us. The retaining wall between our two properties collapsed and lies in chunks in their yard. There is now a sinkhole between our two yards. Our downstairs apartment and garage flooded. All of this because the drains on Glencoe failed and overflowed. We live on Glencoe at the foot of Calavacato. Our driveway, which goes down to our backyard, lines up almost exactly with Calavacato. I'm telling you this to let you know that it was not any water coming down from Calavacato and our driveway that flooded our house and backyard. It was the drains overflowing in front of the house right next to us on Glencoe that caused a flow of water to flow between our two houses and wipe out our backyard. That flow had such force that it even jumped a foot-high cinder block planter in the front yard on its journey down to the backyard. Why am I telling you about our driveway? Because that huge amount of water that flooded us did not come down the driveway because our empty trash cans that sit in that driveway didn't even move an inch and throughout the whole day of heavy rain. They were right there where they'd always been. On the other side of the house closer to the drain, they were floating around like the lake that is our backyard. It was not caused by a design flaw on our property. Our insurance won't cover any of our loss because they don't cover flooding. We contacted FEMA and luckily did receive some money, but it will not be enough to cover the carpet and laminate flooring that we have to replace downstairs or the items that were ruined in the garage or the water heater, mold remediation that we now need. They won't cover anything in the backyard. Those drains that were replaced a few years ago, they are leveled with the street. They do not dip down in any way and that led to the flooding. The drains without scourge?
Uh, thank you so very much. Next we have John L. Wood, followed by Brenda Hammond.
John L. Wood. First, I'd like to know, how soon are they going to put in the new pump station? Pump station fit on design since before Mr. Mike James left the city. That's been about five years. It's been like a long time to me to design a stupid pump station that's already there. And, um, I went down the creek, Los Joyas Creek, down Central and Federal, and measured the width of the space between the creek and the burn. At one point, it's five feet away, the edge of the creek. It needs to be fixed. Another place, uh, which is about five feet away is ten feet from the burn. Herb and all the dirt between the road and the creek. It needs to be fixed. That's all the dirt between the road and the creek. It needs to be fixed. Not yesterday. Yesterday would have been fine. But two, three, four weeks, five weeks, a month, two months, five months, that's usually the way it works. Just like the sheriff's station when the roof came down or currently doing very badly. I, I'm sure they're not going to be back in for at least a year. So we have to depend on the sheriff of Rancho San Diego. And some of us don't drive, so it's a very long walk. And there's no bus or trolley that goes out to Rancho San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brenda Hammond, followed by Fred Morris.
Hi. I'm, I'm not going to talk about storm drains because you know I couldn't have videos in front of you. But thank you, John, for pointing that out for me. Today I was reminded of anger management. There's people out there that purposely mess with people to get an angry reaction. I say give it to them and don't always be nice to those people, especially when it's done on purpose. Purpose like pushing buttons to get an emotional reaction is bullying and should be considered domestic terrorism. I got a test of that today in the public, of course. And you know what? I gave them exactly what they were looking for, especially since I was blocked off by this person's truck, so I could not leave the parking lot. To make it even more fun, it was a family member. And I have, and I have to make it even more fun is the family member's significant other was pushing me and pushing me. So what do I do? I drop the F-bomb because I told you, I'm going to drop the F-bomb if somebody messes with me. But they're going to mess with somebody that's going to have a gun or a knife and they're going to get hurt. You know, so people just need to stop messing with people. And so I'm not going to get into the other point because I guess that would go on another jip. But I wanted to know if you voted today? So this is from when I was campaigning for Howard Cook and Art Madurin and Colonel Powell. So I kept it. So every year I put this out in my, in my windshield or whatever, everywhere. So if you remember. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Fred Morris, followed by Yana Isel. I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name. In the meantime, I would like to ask Peggy Morrison to approach our city clerk because I have a speaker slip here and it says item one, but there are several items under item one. We just want to know which item you're referencing. And I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, Mayor.
If you can speak directly into the mic and, yes, in the face of.
Okay. Today I'm going to ask you to denize, to repair, and on jack structure failure that happened on a storm pipe that runs through my property has failed. This pipe that has failed serves over a hundred properties above me in Lawrence Church. I feel that's a lot of property you've broken. And who knows how many there was. My property value has been decreased because of the qualified failure. And my family is stressed. I'm stressed, my neighbors are stressed, my community around me is stressed. Residents in that area are ready to start speaking up if I ask them. If they're not, ask if they're not willing to come up to this.
Yeah.
They're not, I'm asking them to. I'm asking you to fix my stormpipe, storm pipe. I'm going to talk to you a little about the picture around here so you can understand the problem. This picture right here?
If you can stay behind the podium and then keep your mic at your mouth so we can capture what you're saying.
Okay. That picture right there, that's the storm pipe that's underneath this slab where my RV used to park. That's the flood, a few feet from my neighbor's front porch. Water running out of my neighbor's yard from the storm pipe that failed is going to be flooded. This picture right here, is the sinkhole I fell in while helping my neighbor trying to keep the water out from underneath his basement. He gave me an inch of his house. This picture here, this is the storm gutter in front of my house. Rusted out, ready to fail from the top. As you can see many more of the photos, this photo here, this is after everything caved in. This is the fence along my property line right here. It's falling in the hole. Every rainstorm continues to wash in further and further. We do see my property, reducing my neighbor's property. The city will not come out at all, help secure the area, repair the pipe. All I get is lip service. I go to talk to the city, all I get is another map. I'll get another, I'll, I'll look into it further. I get nothing back. I'm upset. Let's fix this now. Acknowledge it, fix it, denize it, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Yana Isel, followed by Matt Kuchwinski. Yana, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember for hearing me. My name is Gina Isel and I'm a homeowner of
If you can speak directly into the mic.
My name is Gina Isel and I'm a homeowner of Cooks Out of Court. Recently from the winter storm on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the storm drain backed up with, it's backed up with roots, trees, palm trees, all kinds of stuff in the, in the storm drain. I have a corner lot. From the backup, it caused a, two sinkholes in my backyard. My retainer wall collapsed and bugged my fence and bugged my fence. FEMA has come out, they did an assessment, they were able to help us a little bit, but it's not enough to cover a replacement of a foundation retainer wall as well as a fence. I'm asking that the city will consider a building, hit it on yesterday with, with a sanitation truck. They talked bottom to the sewer, they dug a hole behind our evening wall, and then they left. We haven't heard from them since. I did call the city today. They told me that they need to send out an engineer to take a look, to get a proposal. My only concern is there's a neighbor that sits behind me. His home and my retainer wall is getting ready to collapse. And my biggest fear is that it's going to fall into his house and we're going to really have a problem. So I'm asking the council, the mayor, the city of Lemon Grove, if you guys could escalate this issue. I have sent email and I have spoken with the city, and I just wanted to come here and what is my concern as well? Again, as a concerned homeowner for the city of Lemon Grove.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Matt Kuchwinski, followed by Nick Gazeal.
Evening, evening, honorable mayor. Labor Department Councilor, I'm Max Kuchwinski, asking, asking leading the bargaining for our two units with your employees. This is their first contract. If you're starting to bargain, when, when we first started bargaining, you looked at the council with at least two union members and others who were pro-worker. Thinking bargaining would be easy, not fast, but easier, proposals would be worker-friendly. We've tried to come with open minds and be positive, but unfortunately, we've gotten more and more contentious each session over the past several months over non-fiscal issues as we sit to bargain due to your city manager's counter proposals. And the comments made by, by your, by, on behalf of the city's representatives, their actions and inactions. These bargaining sessions only reinforce to our workers that they organize and lead the union because of mistrust management has of them and management's restrictive stance on most employee rights. I have now used the terms bad faith and aggressive bargaining at the bargaining table over the last several months. And while I have not yet filed against your city manager, it seriously moving us closer to filing charges against the city of that fate. So I'm coming to you tonight to update you directly because your lead negotiator tells me she updates the council in post-session on all the proposals you're aware of. I want to tell you from us firsthand and understand this is not going well. In fact, it's going very bad. These right here are all the proposals that are still pending with you at the city after nine months. So let me be clear, nine months later, many of the non-fiscal issues still have resolved, wasted time, wasted taxpayer money, and so indeed presented between you and your employees. Stalling on proposals first, we have dozens of non-fiscal proposals sitting on the city manager's desk waiting for any response. One fiscal, non-fiscal proposal's been there since September. Why? Refusal answers questions. When we've asked questions to understand your city proposals, many times the city manager has directed the bargaining team not to respond, explaining them to us. They say, you're not, you're lawyers, we don't have to tell you, it is not required, we will not discuss it at this time. How do we understand your proposal, especially when your attorney tells us there are other many interpretations that we don't have to agree? You know, when the unions presented a proposal, take backs. We agreed to several issues through back-and-forth counter proposals, like a forty-hour work week from our workers that really have thirty-seven and a half hour work weeks and paid full days off for two days for holidays. Now the city manager is taking it back. After six months, all of a sudden, you're taking away items. Is because, is because are we trying to bargain a contract that is fair for our employees? Aggressive bargaining. The city manager offered some flexible spending benefits that you offer right now. And we countered asking for more funding for flexible spending, which is all right. One of your representatives threatened to take away all funding for flexible spending because we're asking for a higher amount. That is illegal. Confusing workers.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Nick Rubio, followed by Jim Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm Nick Rubio, I'm a city employee with the city of Lemon Grove. I want to let you know an issue we're having with an honor clause particular that union members of the union find is anti-worker. Article twenty-seven in the performance evaluations. City does not want to be held accountable if they don't follow any of these requirements.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Gonzalez, followed by Nick Carrasco.
Evening, councilman. My name is Jim Gonzalez. An employee with the city of Lemon Grove. I want to let you know an issue we're having with an article that we, the union members think is anti-worker. It's Article fourteen, Labor Management Committee. Why are you afraid to meet with us once or twice a year as a union? Talk about ways we can work together. That's all I have for the union. I actually want to thank the sheriffs. My wife had a accident and your deputies were able to help us out. It was Deputy Trumbo, Heizerman, and Russo. So if you can thank them for me, we were able to get things accomplished. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Nick Carrasco, followed by Peggy Morrison.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, and the staff.
If you can speak directly into the mic, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Carrasco. I'm an employee with the city of Lemon Grove. I would, I just want to let you know one example of an issue we're having with an article that we as, that we, the union members think is anti-worker. Article thirty-two of probation. A union member would lose almost all union rights if they are promoted within a bargaining unit. City doesn't want to guarantee, provide probationary employee with evaluations on the progress. City doesn't want to tell new employees they need to take certain classes when they are due or where to take them. City doesn't want to allow a performance plan to help probationary employees improve. Also, the city doesn't want to support mentor programs for new employees. The city doesn't want to tell the union if they fire a member of the union who has a probation. But these are just examples of what we feel is anti-worker.
We have one more speaker, but also two, if I need to, if I need to read into the record again, the, the rules that outline what public comment is for. And I'd be more than happy to do that. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Perry Peggy Morrison. Followed by that, then what I want to do, after, after we are done, I'm going to turn it over to to our city manager to provide comments, and then we will proceed. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here to get news on what the city is doing about the storm drain damage from January. I know I'm not the only one who's going to have post-traumatic stress for the rest of my life every time it rains. Our broken and washed away fence and retainer wall, sinkwell still remain. We've heard nothing from our city. Our neighbor got an estimate for the retaining wall only, and that starts at about twenty-five thousand, not including inspections and fees. Not mentioning that our whole downstairs is flooded. FEMA has come out three times, actually. They inform us they do not cover anything outside of the house. Our yard and fence are not covered. We have also applied for a small business association loan that if we qualify for, then probably will not be able to afford. We finally heard from our insurance company that they will not cover anything. Where gets that from with us? But the real kick, we thought this was just a one-time crazy thing that happened. But we since found out there's history of storm drain that blocked in Lemon Grove. The city knows that other cities drained into our city, so should have alerted someone to go after the cities, the counties, or the, the positive maintenance of Lemon Grove drains. Someone has spoken about having city engineers come and look at their property numerous times over numerous years. Nothing has been done to prevent the stormwater draining into her property. Recently, I heard about another case about a storm pipe, Harson and Lake versus City of Lemon Grove, that started in twenty twenty. After having, after having to almost bankrupt themselves suing the city, the judge sided with the property owners.